Wait for, now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order, and the first item on the agenda is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please, councillor Qualley, second by councillor Fox? All those in favor, posed and carried. Next item is adoption of the minutes, regular evening council meeting of January sixteenth, and the public hearing meeting of January sixteenth. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Sparrow, and second by councillor Davis. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, posed and carried. And there are no presentations, and there are three delegations, so we move directly into delegations, and the first delegation is Mr Andy Shildhorn from the Fort Langley Community Association. Please come forward, and as you know, there's five minutes to present, and then council may have some questions, so, thank you. Oh, they're all three together? Yeah. Okay. All right, fair enough. Well, maybe everybody could, I'll put both mics on, and everybody could just kind of give their name and where they live.
Sure, yeah, they're just loading up here.
Sure, I won't start any timers until you're ready to go.
There you go. No problem, actually. Let me just, because I inevitably forget, I'll give that back to you.
Okay, you ready? Okay, good evening, mayor and council. My name is Andy Shildhorn, I reside at two-two-eight-nine-five Sales Avenue in Fort Langley. We're here on behalf of the Fort Langley Community Association to discuss sidewalks and crosswalk on Ninety-sixth Avenue truck route. In two thousand and sixteen, the Fort Langley Community Association surveyed the residences and businesses of Fort Langley to help us prioritize, as well as to provide feedback to Township Council. Of the fifteen hundred households and businesses surveyed, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven were filled out and returned. A presentation was made to council on July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, outlining the interests, beliefs, and concerns of the residences and businesses in Fort Langley. One of the topics that gained a lot of interest, support, and deemed as very important is the lack of pedestrian safety on the Ninety-sixth Avenue truck route with no sidewalks or crosswalks other than when there is commercial development. Seventy-eight percent of respondents to the survey stated on a weekly basis, or more, they walked or cycled to our commercial core. The Ninety-sixth Avenue truck route is one of only three corridors into the village. As stated, Ninety-sixth Avenue is a designated truck route with heavy commercial tractor-trailers, gravel haulers, et cetera, going through Fort Langley. Township counters are showing heavy truck use on this route at least once every minute and a half during peak hours. The FLCA has encouraged that the Township Council is considering improving the walkability and safety in Fort Langley with the inclusion of a sidewalk option in the two thousand and seventeen budget. Township staff has presented council with two options. Option number one, install concrete sidewalks, and option two, create a separated, shared-use path. So let's quickly recap what they are with the next two slides. Option one, this slide shows option one with a typical raised concrete sidewalk with curb, and then, the next slide here, this option shows a separated, shared path use at same grade as road. We watched the budget debate and listened intently. We took councillor's advice and consulted the residents on Ninety-sixth Avenue and adjoining streets. We also encouraged thoughts and ideas from Fort Langley residents. In mid-January, the FLCA ran a residence poll of affected homes in the area along Ninety-sixth Avenue, with direct flyers hand-delivered to over one hundred homes, including cul-de-sacs. The FLCA also received input from our website, Facebook, and social media. These are some of the response numbers that we got. Forty-three out of forty-three responses regarding sidewalks preferred option one, the full-raised sidewalk. Twenty-three of the respondents live on Ninety-sixth Avenue, including the attached cul-de-sacs. In the responses, we have a few of our residents' quotes. Traffic speed, volume, and the presence of a very large vehicle in this area represent serious potential hazards to pedestrians. Although a raised sidewalk cannot eliminate them, it would go a lot further to improving the situation compared to grade-level alternative. Another one stated, "I simply do not feel safe pushing a stroller along Ninety-sixth Avenue. Without a raised sidewalk and just a raised barrier, I can already imagine all the debris that will accumulate and impair pedestrian ability to walk along Ninety-sixth Avenue." And finally, "We are in favor of option one, a raised curb sidewalk. We have two small children, and walking or cycling onto town along Ninety-sixth Avenue feels dangerous. My husband and I always feel anxious and are constantly corralling the kids to stick as far as they can to the side." We've also received other feedback through social media and email, and some of the concerns were, "There are raised curb sidewalks on Eighty-eighth Avenue, Glover Road, and both these are main thoroughfares. Ninety-sixth Avenue, which is a designated truck route, should also be of the same standard. Average speeds of cyclists are above twenty kilometers an hour. To group them with pedestrians as per option two is a hazard. The Ninety-sixth Avenue truck route is a heavily-used bike route. Street sweeping cannot be used on the pedestrian cyclist side of option two. Again, a hazard to cyclists and very unsightly. Snow removal is an issue, as it was on two-oh-two-A these past few months. Option two requires more specialized maintenance. Studies show pedestrian safety increases when sidewalks are raised in height, visibility improves, and drivers become more aware of their presence, especially when the pedestrians are children. So why is a temporary measure in Willoughby, option two, a permanent consideration for Fort Langley? Option two has a shorter lifespan and may result in rebuild costs in the future, and therefore is not a permanent solution. Our hope is that with a clearer picture of what Fort Langley residents are asking for, mayor and council can see their way through to option one, which in the long run is a smarter, safer way of expending township tax dollars." So now I'll just turn this over to George, and he'll talk about crosswalks.
Certainly, before you go, a question.
Sure.
Pause for some questions from council. Councillor Long?
Thank you, because it's an interesting presentation. Can you roll back into your presentation where it talks about the cost of the two different options?
We didn't...
They're from our report, from this township report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're showing the two costs there?
As per the memo you got from staff?
In your presentation, it doesn't really say anything about cost.
It does here, on the screen.
That's what I'm asking, okay. So one is three-fifty, and one is nine-fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, councillor Whitmarsh has a question, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. We're just wondering, and just from the two different options, I can certainly see from a walking perspective, why, how the raised sidewalk would be preferred, but I'm wondering about the cyclists and sort of having the two mix. Like, it looks to me that for a cyclist, and that's separate from the walkers, that option one is actually less safe for a cyclist, and potentially, it now forces them to ride with the vehicles and cars, around parked cars, or whatever might be there. And so, I can see on one hand, for the walkers, how it might be advantageous, I'm just wondering how option one is seen as the best option for cyclists.
Sure. Well, you know, in reality, the best thing is to have a cycling lane, and, you know, Fort Langley has a lot of cyclists going on. I don't know how many thousands of cyclists go through the fort. I know, I've done a lot of riding in the fort, and what I know is that in option two, when you have a barrier like that, and you think that you have truck traffic, you can't hop that barrier. So if you're gonna be squeezed, then you're gonna hit that barrier, you're gonna go down. If you're in there with the pedestrians, and somebody comes backing out of the driveway, and they don't see you, you have no option, but you have the pedestrian on one side, and you have a raised curb on another side, you're kind of boxed in. So it's very, very difficult, like, you don't have any alternatives, and when you're cycling, you're always looking for, you know, the back-out plan, you know, in case something goes wrong, and you're limited. So with that, I, as a cyclist, I would much prefer option one, and also too, that, you know, cyclists, their, my average speed was about twenty-eight to thirty kilometers an hour. If you're going down a, option two, where you're going with pedestrians, you're moving at a pretty good speed, and you're not giving any chance of leeway, that you're mixing cyclists, which is a fast speed, with a pedestrian, which is a slow speed, and it's, I'd rather be out on the street. In fact, I probably, I would see a cyclist probably being out on the street if he had option two.
Okay, so you're suggesting, as one pitcher has in here, this option one, having a sidewalk with potentially a cycling lane along here where there would be no parking in order that the cyclists could cycle, is that sort of what you're suggesting?
Yeah, the idea would be to have a cycling lane, but we're not asking for that. I don't know if the road is wide enough for that at this time, but I also know too, that in option two, you won't have street cleaning, you'll have buildup of debris, and a cyclist just can't go down that type of road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, that's the last question. Thank you, and Mr Audie.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is George Audie, I live at eight-nine-three-five Glover Road in Fort Langley. I'm a director of the Fort Langley Community Association. We often hear of how Fort Langley is supposed to be a walkable community, especially with the traffic and parking issues becoming an increasing problem. As we progress at getting a sidewalk on Ninety-sixth Avenue, which is one of three main corridors into the fort, there are no crosswalks on the entirety of Ninety-sixth except the three-way stop at the very end of Ninety-sixth where it meets Glover Road. I would like to point out, if I may, that a large portion of Fort Langley, including all of Bedford Landing, reside north of Ninety-sixth Avenue, and all the schools in Fort Langley, including the Langley Fine Arts School, are located south of Ninety-sixth. Parents, children, and all residents need a safe crossing area from all Fort Langley areas north of Ninety-sixth, including Bedford Landing, to get to school. There are two paved pedestrian paths leading to Ninety-sixth at Edel from either side with no safe way to cross. Previous traffic counts do not take into account that many parents and kids do not cross Ninety-sixth because it is unsafe. However, every day, students, parents, and others jaywalk since they have no other viable option to get across. Just remember, Ninety-sixth is a designated official truck route. This is a map of the area showing in details the routes taken and marked pedestrian paths that schoolkids use to get from Bedford Landing to the Fine Arts School. Bedford Landing is shown on the top in the large yellow square. Kids follow the green line, they go across the train tracks where there's an overpass, they follow a marked path to Edel Street, they walk down Edel, and they run across Ninety-sixth dodging traffic to get to Crickmere. They then follow Crickmere to another designated path that takes them straight to the school. When we were counting, you know, crossings and trucks and cars, on one rainy morning, kids were carrying umbrellas, and you could see them struggling to look one way up Ninety-sixth and the other way up Ninety-sixth with their umbrellas, trying to see when it was safe to cross. It was crazy. Let's look a little more detail at the marked routes that the kids currently follow. This is the overpass that provided, to allow students and others cross over the train tracks from Bedford Landing to Edel Street. A previous council decided parking homes be required to build at considerable expense a pedestrian overpass to provide Bedford Landing residents a safe exit and entry from the development. It seems illogical that this safe exit and entry for pedestrians leading south right to Edel Street would not then include an eventual plan to allow a safe crossing at Ninety-sixth. This is the pedestrian entrance that, when they come over the overpass, they follow that path. This is the entrance that gets them onto Edel Street from that path. Once they get across Ninety-sixth, this is the next path they get to, which takes them to the school, so they're clearly marked township paths, but they have to run across Ninety-sixth to use them. In early November, the FLCA did a small traffic and pedestrian study to see what kind of numbers we were dealing with. Three separate studies were done. November eighth morning, with partial clear sky, no rain, for an hour. November ninth morning, it was a rainy, dark morning, these are the hours that the kids were crossing, that's why we were there then, and then November afternoon, which was sunny breaks, nice weather, and we did it for fifty minutes, five zero minutes. During the three short crossing periods of time, county students, there were sixty-three students crossing Ninety-sixth at Edel between cars and trucks, including six parents and grandparents crossing with younger children, with two babies in baby carriages and four dogs. During the fifty-minute period in the afternoon on November ninth, there was a total of four-hundred-and-sixty cars and heavy trucks went through the area at the same time that the kids were crossing during that fifty-minute period. That was comprised of four-hundred-and-twenty-six cars and light trucks, thirty-four heavy eighteen-wheelers and giant gravel trucks, some of which were pulling trailers. Think about a very rough estimate, on a school year of one-hundred-and-seventy-nine days in a year, that works out to about sixty-eight-hundred student crossings across Ninety-sixth each year. During that exact same time period, there's over a hundred thousand vehicles that cross that same area going along Ninety-sixth in both directions. As mentioned earlier, the FLCA surveyed with direct flyers and hand-delivered to over a hundred homes along Ninety-sixth, including the cul-de-sacs. We received twenty-six out of twenty-six responses regarding sidewalks who wanted a sidewalk, or a crosswalk at Edel. No respondents came back and said they didn't want a crosswalk. In the responses, we had a few quotes from people. "I observe Langley Fine Arts students crossing along, crossing Edel Street each school day, and I witness them wait for clearing and car traffic before dashing across Ninety-sixth. This is beyond unsafe, and I cannot believe the township feels it is acceptable for children to risk their lives just to get to school." We absolutely support, this is another one, "We absolutely support a pedestrian-controlled crosswalk Ninety-sixth at Edel. My kids attend Fort Langley Elementary and the school, and the Fort Langley Learning Center, which is located on the school grounds, and when I walk my kids in the morning, we use the same route as outlined in your report, crossing Ninety-sixth." When we are, the third one was, "When we are at Crickmere waiting to cross, it is still scrambled to cross the extra distance to reach Edel, especially on bikes when we are trying to reach the far side. There is not one crosswalk along Ninety-sixth in the entire community other than the stop sign at Glover Road for us to cross." Excellent. Here we have two options that we believe are viable for the pedestrian-controlled crosswalk lights, one that is solar-powered if there's no power, and one that is powered if there is actually wiring in the road at that point. And I'll turn this over to Solon for the conclusion.
Are there any questions for Mr Audie by council? No, okay, thanks.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Solon Bakoltz of Fort Langley, B.C. I am the vice-chair of the Fort Langley Community Association. We trust the township will recognize the overwhelming support of both option-one sidewalks in conjunction with a crosswalk on Ninety-sixth at Edel. This is supported by the two-hundred-and-fifty-eight respondents to the FLCA Vision Fort Langley survey, the forty-three responses directly obtained by residents on Ninety-sixth, and immediate surrounding homes supporting option one, and the twenty-six responses with one-hundred percent support for the crosswalk at Edel Street. As well, and very importantly, the Langley Fine Arts Parent Advisory Committee fully supports this initiative for the pedestrian-controlled crosswalk at Edel and the option-one raised sidewalks. Many parents and teachers of students at this school have wanted this safety issue looked after, and were very excited to hear it was being brought to council. The Langley Fine Arts PAC has provided us a letter to distribute to council on behalf of students and parents alike. Further, the Township of Langley has received letters of support from the Fort Langley Business Improvement Association and the Fort Langley Community Improvement Society, and we appreciate that all community groups representing all varied interests in Fort Langley are unified in this initiative. Township has always strived to be a walkable, sustainable, and inclusive community. Fort Langley in particular has always been pedestrian, cyclist, and family-friendly, yet lacks connectivity at critical points of use. This impacts the safety for all. Ninety-sixth Avenue has long been an area of concern by residents, students, cyclists, and visitors alike. This is an opportunity to not only connect our existing pathways, sidewalks, and cycling routes, but connect our community as a whole for today and the future as the walkable, sustainable, and inclusive community that we all desire. I encourage you to take your kids and grandkids, or ride your bike down Ninety-sixth as it is today, and visualize all options, and decide what truly benefits and improves the use and safety, and is consistent with the form and character. I urge the township to consider all aspects, both factual and functional, of this decision in making the best choice for the community. The FLCA supports option-one sidewalks and crosswalks at Ninety-sixth and Edel. Thank you.
Thank you, I do have a question from councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you. I sort of had a general comment first, and I just want to thank your organization for all the work that you've done, a lot of due diligence and reaching out to the community to find out what they have in terms of their own interests, and just a comment about the age-friendliness of certain options as opposed to others. But I did have a very specific question. So you mentioned the Langley Fine Arts PAC, and I wonder, you referenced a letter. Do you have that letter with you? Did they send it to mayor and council?
The PAC actually sent us the letter today, so I am aware that the council received many letters of support from parents, students, and teachers in the last coming days, sorry, up to this presentation, but I do have the PAC letter here, and I'll read it to you now. So this is from the Langley Fine Arts School Parent Advisory Council, dated today. Dear Langley Township Council, as the president of the Langley Fine Arts School PAC, I write in full support of the crosswalk proposal being presented by the Fort Langley Community Association. Several members of the LFAS school community have read FLCA's research and carefully-designed plans, and we find FLCA plans to take into consideration the greatest measures of security without incurring exorbitant costs. Further, having discussed the matter with many families at LFAS, the facts stand that many more school families would use the walkways already in place if there was a safe place where their children could cross Ninety-sixth Avenue. Also, it would provide safety measures for students during walking field trips, as well as for scout groups and others that want to access both the LFAS school grounds and the city park, pool, and sports fields. As it stands, the walkways from both the north and south lead to Ninety-sixth, but there is absolutely no location for crossing the road. Since Ninety-sixth Avenue is a truck route, and also contains an increasing amount of vehicle traffic, it is unreasonable to expect families to feel safe crossing against such heavy and fast-moving traffic. Further, to consider that through traffic yield to pedestrians mid-road without a safety crosswalk in place poses a high risk of vehicle collision. Additionally, there is no safe walkway along Ninety-sixth Avenue. Pedestrians of all ages, as well as cyclists, run the risk of personal injury every time they need access along this route. While it is my understanding that the LTC is considering temporary sidewalk measures in the form of asphalt barriers, I urge the council to reconsider a more permanent solution, as required pedestrian access along Ninety-sixth is not a temporary situation. Foot and bicycle traffic along Ninety-sixth will only continue to grow, as will vehicle traffic. Therefore, putting in temporary sidewalks is a waste of both time and resources. Not only that, but temporary asphalt barriers pale in comparison to safety features of a fully-raised sidewalk. The safer, and by far more economical, measure in the long run is to adopt the township option-one for permanent fully-raised sidewalks. Therefore, it is our strong opinion that a crosswalk at Ninety-sixth Avenue and Edel, as the FLCA is proposing to the Langley Township Council, and option-one of fully-raised sidewalks, be given the full weight of the Langley Township Council's consideration. To not adopt a crosswalk proposal and appropriate sidewalk measures in this expanding neighborhood would be negligent.
Thank you, and just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we've had the benefit of having the costing of these different options so far to council, but I'm wondering if you have any kind of ballpark information about the two different options for a crosswalk that you referenced?
I don't have, but I will make a comment regards the benefit that you guys have had. I did have the opportunity to review the video of the budget meeting, and it's my understanding that those were actually not quotes, that there were indeed rough estimates provided, and they were also outdated, and those comments were made by multiple members of council during that debate. So I think if we put money is the only question in making this determination, then we're putting money in front of safety, and I know the township and council put safety first. So I think first and foremost, we need to determine what the best option is, and then at that point, get accurate and consistent quotes for that work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, councillor Sparrow.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. The crosswalk at Edel was a motion I put forward last term, and it didn't sort of make it into the budget process. I think we got as far as the pedestrian counts, which weren't quite up to the levels that were required, but I found it helpful, and I had mentioned it as well, my concern of what the PAC had mentioned, which was that there are many parents who aren't walking their children that, across that route right now because they're feeling that it's unsafe, and that would definitely affect the traffic numbers, as well as the community was quite new at that time, last, you know, a few years ago. So I thank your organization for bringing this forward, and for, you know, continuing to have this be an issue that we look at, because I certainly agree, as someone who lived in that community, that walking your children to and from is difficult, so I appreciate your presentation.
Thanks councillor Sparrow, and to your comment, I think you make a great one. When you're trying to determine whether a crosswalk or a sidewalk is in need, and you do counts, you're basing counts on the existing use, and what's not being considered is the fact that people are avoiding that particular area. They're walking through the cemetery down to Glover in order to avoid crossing at Ninety-sixth, and our community is always growing, and Fort Langley is one of the gems of the Township of Langley, and we've got to be forward-thinking in how we resolve today's problems.
Councillor Fox, I got several, councillor Fox, Long, and then Whitmarsh. Councillor Fox?
Thank you. Could you go back to one of the very first slides you had on there? Your option number one, no, go ahead. Oh, okay, go back right to the beginning, because one of my questions is parking. See that blue car right there? If you put sidewalks on both sides, you eliminate the parking. Did you ask the residents on Ninety-sixth if they were prepared to lose their parking? We've been through this in the last six months.
So Charlie Fox, we asked every single resident that is directly impacted by this proposal what they preferred in terms of sidewalk options or no sidewalk options, and they voted for option one. They, in regards to your parking question, we're all aware that Fort Langley is under tremendous growth as well as parking challenges, and I think that, the parking problem is a separate issue that council needs to direct and address when dealing with development in Fort Langley. That's an ongoing issue, but to say that parking is more important than the safety of pedestrians, I think is a foolish choice.
I didn't say that.
No, I'm not saying that you did say that.
Well, you just did.
No.
But my point is that residents park there...
Yes, I'm aware of that.
And they're gonna lose that parking. Are they prepared? We went through this in Olagrove, and the residents were very upset when they lost their parking on one side of the street, and we need to click clarification of that through a residential survey before we say a hundred percent want the sidewalks. That's a...
One person came back that didn't want to move forward with option-one sidewalk due to parking, but to answer your question, are they aware? Yes, I think the forty-three people that responded that they would like a sidewalk as option-one in front of their home speaks loud and clear of what they desire.
Okay, as long as you, as long as you're prepared for that, that's fine. Now go a couple more slides to this one here. So one side is estimated at nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is basically twice as much as we've set aside for the temporary measure at this point in time. So I think that the estimate of two sides was roughly one-point-two million dollars. You add to that about two-hundred-thousand dollars roughly for that, you're up to one-point-four million dollars. So we're about well over three times what the original estimate for the temporary sidewalks would be. So I'm reading you, "Encourage mayor and council to include in the two thousand and seventeen budget and five-year plan, a sidewalk option." So my question is, do you recognize that probably one-point-four million dollars is a bit excessive in this year's budget to put those sidewalks and crosswalk in?
So you've brought up several points there, and to your comments, the, in the budget hearing where you had the two different options, or actually, there was four different options, both one side for option two, and then one and two side for option one. Again, those were estimates. What you guys did vote to do was set aside a particular amount of funds towards sidewalks, but you also didn't have exact quote figures in terms of cost, so relying that the cost is gonna be one-point-four million without an actual quote, we don't know. But if your question is that it is gonna cost more than what you've set aside for this budget, I think it's always prudent to do the job right one time than do the job wrong three or four times. So yes, if it means that we can't have it today, but we're working towards the best solution for the community, then I think that's the option that we have to work towards. And I know...
One side at a time here. What's that? One side at a time.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, there's the option, and this is why we put it up there, that you can do one side at a time if that's what the budget allows, and that's what you see up here.
Okay, so what you're saying is, you're prepared to wait? If we don't have all the funds right now, we could do it in a progressive manner if that was deemed expedient, so do you do one side, maybe the crosswalk, and then another side, such as that phased in, I guess, would be the other option? Is that what you're suggesting?
Ultimately, I can speak for myself, I can't speak for the community at large, and the PAC, and the FLCS, and everybody. I think obviously we want to see a solution to this problem sooner than later. You, as council and mayor, have to decide how that budget works and how that can be executed, and that's your role in this. So if you decide that it's something that has to be delayed, then ultimately, that's your decision. As a community, we want to see a solution now.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Counselor Long?
Yeah, I guess I'm starting to understand a bit more from the other questions that I asked, but I think that's what council was trying to do, was come up with a solution right away by putting the, and I don't call them temporary, I don't know why you're calling them temporary sidewalks, but they were a different form of sidewalk on both sides of the street immediately. The whole notion of the crosswalk has come before, and I thought that was very thoughtful that you brought that to us tonight, and I think that's something that council should deliberate on. I'm not sure why we're seeing these pictures. Is this in Surrey, maybe?
Nope, that's 202A, and temporary is often a solution that doesn't last very long, and we know how long ago the 202A temporary solution was put in place, and this is the result of that solution.
And it's not effective right now? I understand it's fairly effective the way it is. Anyway, I think that council had said, let's put the two sidewalks in, not raised, but the asphalt ones, which I wouldn't call temporary, they could be built a little bit more permanently than this, and maybe there would be funds then to put the crosswalk in. But if you're, I understood initially from your presentation that you were preferring to have Option 1, which is a raised sidewalk on only one side of the street, and I was going to ask, which side did you want to put that on? Because if you have it on one side, then you're certainly encouraging people to have to cross 96th even more. And I might just point out that this picture is extremely misleading, because that looks like an extremely wide street, which does not exist on 96th.
I'll just point out that that picture is what you guys used in your deliberation.
Hot and accurate depiction of 96th, and that was brought up at the meeting.
Again, this is what you guys were looking at when making that decision, so we're only reusing your images. Now, in regards to your question...
But Langley, you know it doesn't look anything like that, right?
I'm well aware, which is why we provided another example.
Thank you.
... in the report.
Exactly. To your question, though, Counselor Long, in regards to it, I mean, obviously, again, you know, the community is always looking for what's best, and two sides is always better than one, but we're also conscious that, you know, there's a cost associated to everything that improves the community. That being said, as it stands, if they can just show the slide where the commercial core is, we already have existing new sidewalks on 96th from Glover up a portion of the south side. It was a requirement under the commercial development for the medical building. You can see it right there, so that's on the south side, and you'll notice that the pathway actually just dead-ends. So you have already raised sidewalks that currently run halfway to Edel, and they terminate to dirt. So it would make the most sense that you would continue off of that portion. And now also, you can't see it in this photo, but on the south side, to your question regarding Edel and being dead-ended on one side, there is sidewalks up to the Lombardi Park on the south side, as well as the purpose of that crosswalk was to connect the Edel pathway that goes into Bedford Landing, which is always existing, so it's not relevant that sidewalks are not on the north side.
I appreciate the presentation too, because I think I speak for all of council. We want a solution that is the most safe and most usable. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Thank you. Just, if you wouldn't mind just leaving this slide up, this is a good one to look at. And I'm coming back to the area of cycling just for a second here, and want to just touch on this. When I look at this picture here, just so I understand, are you suggesting the sidewalk would go right where this lady in the red is walking? Is that where the sidewalk would go, right against the road?
No, I'm not an engineer in terms of designing sidewalks, but no, because if you look where she's standing, she's actually standing in the road, but you can notice where the raised concrete is, is actually to the south of her. Her choice to walk on the road was probably to keep her shoes clean than walking in the dirt that's currently on the south side, which is where the sidewalk would likely go.
Sidewalk would go then where this brown, I'm not sure what that is.
Dirt.
No, no, sorry, the stand or...
Oh, actually, yeah, here, I can show them all.
Through the post and by the sign and kind of there.
Right here is where the existing sidewalk is.
Yeah.
If you were to continue this raised level right here, that would run down here, which means your sidewalk would be right here.
Okay, so where this lady's walking could potentially be a bike path, is that...
Potentially correct, yes.
So if we were to do the sidewalk on both sides, you could have a sort of bike lane like potentially where she's walking, is that sort of what you're suggesting?
Potentially, yes, yes, and also on the north side, so you can't see it there, but on the opposite side of the road, there's an additional white line marked, just like this, which would also allow potentially the space for a bike lane.
Okay, because I know in your presentation, you're talking both about walking and cycling, and yet most of the discussion has been around walking. So I'm not sort of seeing how we're accommodating the cycling, and maybe it doesn't, maybe it fits there, like we see, maybe it has to be on a different road, there has to be a different cycling path somewhere else through Fort Langley. But I think it is important that regardless of which way we go, we consider both those, cycling and walking on this, through this area. So we have to consider both, and that's a concern for me, that both of those are safe. And I know, you know, certainly there's a lot of expense to it, but I think both of those areas are important, and I don't think we should forget one or the other.
Counselor Whitmarsh, I appreciate your comments, because I think that's exactly right. We have to think of all options. In making the decision of Option 1 or 2, if we all decide that the best option is raised sidewalks, a crosswalk, and a bike lane, you know, then the decision really becomes going back to staff and ensuring that the widths are there and properly designing it, rather than just putting a Band-Aid solution on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor, no, Counselor Davis turned his light off. Okay, great. That's all the comments and questions from council. Thank you very much for your presentation, and a lot of good points have been raised. It would, you know, require our staff to provide us with some further information on how much of our road allowances is there to work with and how it could be done, but it's something that council could consider later on. So certainly, thank you very much for doing your work and bringing this to our attention.
Thanks, mayor and council, and we'll be happy to share everything we have with you after.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's something I wanted to say at the beginning of the meeting, and I guess I forgot, and moved directly into the agenda, and I did want to say something about what happened last night in Quebec, that we want to send our condolences to the families in Quebec who lost loved ones in that shooting. The shooting was at the Quebec Islamic Cultural Centre, and I see that as a very sad time in our history. And Prime Minister Trudeau said earlier that diversity is our strength, and religious tolerance is our value, that we as Canadians hold dear, and that's something that is reflected by myself, and I trust all of council. So I did want to make an official statement that we do send our condolences to those families in Quebec over this tragic time. Thank you. So now we'll move on to, we have no reports, and we go straight to bylaws for consideration at third reading. And H1 is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100085. This is development permit application number 100674, 216 Fraser Ventures Limited, and bylaw 5251 and 5252.
So move. Counselor Davis moves it, is there a second, or Counselor Fox seconds it? Any discussion from members of council? Counselor Richter?
Yes, we had some letters coming from the development, the existing development to the east, requesting replacement of the fencing that is currently between the two properties. So I'd like to make that a condition of this application, so I'd move that the fencing be replaced, or upgraded, or updated, or whatever, in between the two.
The east side, sorry, which one?
It's on the, the east side.
The east side, so that the proponent upgrade or respond to the, request the public to upgrade or replace that fence. Okay, seconded, Counselor Arneson. Okay, discussion on the amendment? Counselor Fox?
Just to say that would be condition 11.
Condition 11?
Add condition 11.
Okay, add, sir.
Add what?
Condition 11.
11, okay.
Is that consistent, Mr. Backen? Fitz, thank you. Okay, Counselor Long?
Well, I just want to be sure, can staff comment on that? Would that not already likely be in the proposal?
Mr. Seffy, do you have any comments on sides? What, in fact, wouldn't it be both sides?
Your worship, first of all, I guess I haven't seen the submission that Counselor Richter referenced, but having said that, it doesn't hurt to add this as a condition, if, even if it's included already, to make sure that the proponents are aware of, I guess, the request of council.
Then we should make it both, we should look at the other side too. I'm not sure why one would get one and one not, so I guess, you know, proper fencing on both sides should be looked at.
I'm fine with that.
The, I think the public had asked for the one side, and I certainly think staff can work with the proponent to address that, unless that's going to be, I don't know if there's a, is there a fence on the west side? From the picture, I can't tell if there's a fence, so if there's no fence...
Perhaps we could be broader with the motion and to say that staff work with the proponents in terms of fencing, period.
The landscape plan, there's a...
So the landscaping plan, your worship, does show fencing around the perimeter of the site?
Sides, on all sides, actually.
Yeah, the letter that we got said that the fencing is there, but it's falling down. It needs to be updated.
Well, I think you're, what Mr. Seffy's saying is it's in the plan. If I can read this plan, it's hard to read on the screen, but there's fencing, there's landscaping, there's buffer, but certainly the motion doesn't hurt to reinforce council's wish, and so, Counselor...
And then I had, yeah, and there was also someone from the retirement centre talking about realigning the play area to make sure that the parking spaces weren't lost, so...
We'll deal with this amendment first, and then if there's any, I'll talk with that. So this is the amendment on the fence on the east side, so if council wished, after seeing this, to add more fences, then I would just take that as another amendment, but if not, I think there's enough.
Yeah, I thought we were going to look at fencing all around it.
Okay, and just move that, we'll just keep it clear, so we just move that as amendment to address fencing all around it as amendment?
And the amendment that fencing all around be...
So that'd be amending the amendment, just to say, include all of it, so it's on record. So I'm going to call the vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Well, excuse me, was it seconded, the amendment to the amendment?
Oh, sorry, is there a seconded to the amendment to the amendment? Counselor Arneson, I apologize. So any discussion on that? And so with that, I'll call a question on the amendment to the amendment, that's really complicated. That carries unanimously, and then the amendment as amendment, as amended. Counselor Fox, did you wish to speak to that? Are you on the list?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question to the amendment as amended. Carries unanimously. So now we're back to the main motion as amended, and so I'll move on the list. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I would like to make another condition. My concern is, what came up at the public hearing is the degree to which there will be an impact. I know that there's a buffering wall there between the commercial component that will remain and the development there, but I would like to add a condition that some type of acoustic wall be added there, because I don't think landscape buffering is actually going to mitigate much of the noise, because we have to recognize in addition to having the commercial element there, which, who knows, could be open, you know, many, many hours of the day with lots of noise in and of itself, but Fraser Highway is also very noisy there, and they're just really right close to that. So I think that that would be an improvement to the overall design, and not really much of an extra cost relative to this. I did take a tour of the area the other day, and I noticed that in the back of this property that will remain, where the commercial component is, that there's garbage containers and, you know, people coming and going and traffic, and I just think that it would be helpful to any kind of development there to have some noise mitigation on that side.
Seconded, amendment to install a sound, acoustic wall or sound mitigation wall on the south side, just along landscape buffer. I have a question, I understand the proponent had said that they're deactivating that gas station, that commercial center, is that, I'm just wondering how much more, during the public hearing, did the proponent mention something about that? Mr. Seffy?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said, your worship.
Did the proponent mention something about deactivating the commercial use, the gas station, they were shutting it down? I thought, I thought that's what I heard, that it's not going...
There, though?
Yeah. Then somebody else can come in. That's right.
But the land will remain zoned for that use, your worship.
Okay, okay, fair enough, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Any discussion on the amendment? And seeing none, I'll call a question on the amendment. And it carries, Counselor Qualley opposed, and so Counselor, we're back to the main motion as amended. Counselor Fox?
Yeah, I just, Counselor Long brought it up too, and I'm not sure if he had a motion in mind. It was that top south, sorry, northwest corner where they talked about, one of our speakers talked about reorienting a child-friendly amenity area slightly to allow for better parking up in that northwest corner. I don't want to make it a condition, but I would like to include it in staff's work with the proponent to see if it would be possible to reorient that child-friendly amenity and allow for a bit more parking. I drove by there a couple times, and certainly there seems to be, as was alluded to, cars that are parked there for the purposes of, I guess, taking a transit to wherever. They seem to be there all day, so, and I'm not sure that they're, if they're workers or if they're transit users, but one or the other, they're there all day. So to help alleviate some of that congestion, maybe we could just request that the proponent and staff work together to see if there was an option for that.
Thank you. I think I can direct you to clerk, to the clerk's note at the bottom of H1, and that addresses the parking. Maybe Mr. Seffy could expand on that and elaborate on if that is, will meet the needs that Counselor Long and Counselor Fox are discussing, or if we need to do more.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for pointing it out. The essence of the paragraph is that the pre and post-development, if you will, parking provisions or parking allowed on the, on the street will remain the same.
So, so it's covered, if you see that note, no, once, I think staff are already aware of it, and the proponents working with them.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to have street parking for people who are visiting the area, but I think it's not our job, as has been said on this council by other councillors, for us to provide on-street parking for residents in the area. And I, I don't particularly agree with the argument that this is transit parking that's going on in there, because I drive by there to go to work every week, and it seems to me that it's employee parking, and I often see the bus for the seniors home parked out there on the street. So I'm wondering if we, if we're going to have street parking, if we also need to look at putting like time-limited parking in, so people are not monopolizing that parking?
Those are very good points. I don't know if we've had any, we've had a concern from resident regarding the parking, and this addresses it, but I think it's certainly something that could be monitored, and if there's an issue, especially the parking review that's going on, that we brought back to council, and we certainly could address that at a future time if there's an issue, but I don't know if we want to do it this time. Mr. Seffy, do you have any comments on that?
Thank you, your worship. I guess a couple of quick comments. One is that staff is aware that there has been some, I guess you can call them illegal parking, parking that is not safe and not permitted pursuant to the highway and traffic bylaw. In other words, too close to the intersection, that has been occurring, and perhaps people have become accustomed to it, that will have to stop, and we will make sure that there is additional enforcement of that to make sure that it's only legal and safe on-street parking. And the other part, the other comment I would like to make is that staff is currently, as council is aware, working on a bit of a holistic potential strategy in terms of dealing with parking in the township as a whole, with respect to potentially time-limited parking, maybe resident parking, resident-only parking, pay parking, all of those options are being considered and at some point brought to council for consideration.
Yeah, and that's a good thing, and we're looking forward to that report. I'm just saying right now, the parking that's going on there is parking for either employees or maybe other area residents, and this particular development is quite dense, and I'm sure it will house young families that have people come over to visit with them, so I can see there being a conflict over access to on-street parking in this little area here, and I'd like to avoid that if at all possible.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on H1 as amended.
Oh, I, sorry.
Hannah carries with Counselor Richter opposed. All right, move on to rezoning application number 100448, development permit application number 100817, and this is bylaw number 5245, 20321, 80th Avenue. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Sorry, that was Counselor Long, Counselor Long, seconded. Counselor Fox, discussion on H2. Seeing none, I'll call the question. H2. Counselor Qualley?
I'm sorry. Thought I did.
Hannah carries with Counselor Arneson opposed. Okay, move on to H3, and this is rezoning application number 100463, Linterry Developments Limited, bylaw number 5253. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Qualley, seconded, or Counselor Davis? Councillor Qualley, second by councillor Davis, councillor Fox.
Yeah, I would like to add a condition, if I could please, relative to this particular development and the feedback that we've got in response to the public submissions that we received. And that would be condition number eight, following implementation of a traffic calming measures on 44A Avenue and surrounding streets as supported by residents subject to compliance with the provisions of the Township of Langley Neighborhood Traffic Calming Policy with all related costs to be borne by the proponent.
Is there a seconder to the amendment?
No, second.
Councillor Qualley seconds, and I'll open up amendment one. Any discussion on the amendment? Councillor Long?
Okay, so, um, the motion says according to all our policies, so that means surveys will be taken and recorded, so it may or may not go in. We're not saying that traffic calming must go in, but we're going to launch the process that we always use.
Implementation of traffic calming wasn't an option.
Okay, well, I, I, that's, that's why I'm asking the question, Your Worship. Normally when we do this, we check with the neighborhood, and some may like it, some may not. So is this going to follow the normal procedure?
I'll ask Mr. Seffy, because it may be as a requirement of the development, which we sometimes require developers, developments to put in traffic calming. Mr. Seffy, the process for this traffic calming, would it be as a requirement for the developer to put it in, or does it go through the process as if it's an existing road that we have to, go through that, go through the polling and surveying of the neighbors? What's the process, Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's really the will of council. We have had both instances, as I recall, in the past where traffic calming has been a requirement, period, or if, if supported by the majority of the residents pursuant to policy. As I understood councillor Fox's motion, perhaps incorrectly, it was subject to the policy, which would mean that we would go through the process and only implement if the majority of the residents in the area would support it. Because typically, if that's not followed, what may happen is some people may be opposed to it after, and then present their case to council, and that would be an additional cost to actually remove them at that point. So it could be either or.
And so, Your Worship, that's what I was pointing out, and I think it's a, it's an awesome solution, but I think we should go through the process. And if it's such a good solution, I'm sure that the residents will, will adopt it, and we won't have the backlash. But I think you need to ask everybody, and that's just the process we use. But it would be borne by the developers, what I'm hearing.
Yeah, the costs would be borne by the developer, not by the.
So that's the motion I support.
But I don't know what we got.
Okay, thank you. So on the amendment, any further discussion?
Could you just explain the amendment? Sorry.
Yes, I'll have the amendment read out again. Ms. Bauer, do you have it, or?
You read it too fast.
Councillor Fox, if you want to hand it into, you have it, I see it written down. If you want to give it to the clerk, please, so we have the exact wording. The bottom paragraph.
Implementation of a traffic calming measures on 44A Avenue and surrounding streets as supported by residents subject to compliance with provisions of the Township of Langley Neighborhood Traffic Calming Policy with all related costs to be borne by the proponent.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Davis?
So if we, it, it's, it's going to be a question to the community whether they want it or not. And if they want it, then it, all the costs will be on the developer, correct?
Yeah. Okay. All right, I see no further discussion on the amendment. I'll call the question, and this is H3. That carries with councillor Arneson opposed. So the motion as amended is now back on the floor, and councillor Qualley?
Thank you. I'd like to also add a condition, condition number nine, that, um, as it refers to lot number five, that we double the amount of the setback, so taking it from 1.5 meters to three meters, and that in lot number five, the driveway be located on the east side of the property. So we had a lot of concerns from residents.
Just, just before you speak to it, you're asking for setback on the east side?
Correct, to three meters.
The side setback to be doubled from one and a half to three meters, and that the driveway be located along the east side off of 44A Avenue.
That's right.
Okay, so that's the amendment on the floor, we get a seconder, and then you wish to speak to it. Is there a seconder to that? Councillor Arneson seconds. Councillor Qualley, you wish to speak to that? And so I'll open up amendment one.
Thank you. So just the information we got at the public hearing, or that I heard at the public hearing, was that the folks who live on the east side of lot number five would be staring at the two-story house really close to their, their backyard. So hopefully with the setback change and the driveway being on that side, it would sort of mitigate the, what they have to look at in terms of perhaps just the, just the garage and the driveway. So that's the rationale for that.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I was going to suggest something similar to that, but a question that did come up, I think, at the public hearing, which I would like to ask through you to staff, is there any way we can request that a bungalow be constructed on lot five rather than a two-story home?
Mr. Seffy, I guess that would be a change in the height requirements of a building.
Uh, Your Worship, I was, I was paying close attention to councillor Richter, and I think I, I heard the word request. Certainly council can make the request at any time. So the question becomes, is that something that council would like to see, as opposed to making a request to the proponent, which will likely be considered, but then potentially rejected?
Well, no, I, I would really like to see a bungalow or a lower, because I'm quite worried about the visual impact on the backyards of the existing Ben's Crescent homes. So I think the other lots are fine. Lot five is problematic because of its orientation. The suggestion was made that if it wasn't two-story, if it was a bungalow, it would have less of a visual impact. So I would like to see a bungalow built on lot five. Can I make that as a condition?
The answer is yes, Your Worship. Council could make that as a condition of third reading.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it up later, then.
Do you want to? Okay, we're back, we're on to the motion as amended, so if you wish to make that.
As an amendment to the.
It's amendment, yeah, if you wish to make that, you need to do it now as amendment to third reading. Is that correct, Mr. Backen, or what's the? Or is it?
That's correct, Your Worship. You do have the amendment, though, as to the double setback and to.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we're on that side, sorry. I got. So we're on the amendment of the setbacks. So we'll take that after this is dealt with. Councillor Long?
Yeah. So, Your Worship, I think we're all talking about the same thing, and that is the treatment of lot five being the uniqueness of it. I'm wondering if, if another solution might cover everybody's concern. Could we put it as a development permit requirement on that property, so we can see what the proponent's going to provide? Because maybe it's a bungalow, maybe it's low-rise, I don't know. Maybe there's other solutions that can be given. What we're trying to address is the fact that if, as was presented, yes, those in, in the two lots that are on the east, they would be looking right into a fairly tall building. So is that a possibility, is that easier, that we make it a development permit required for that lot?
Uh, Your Worship, it won't make it easier. It will likely make it more complicated and, and subject to another process for a development permit, which is typically not done, not done for single family.
So right now, we're talking about the setbacks.
Yeah, so, so let me ask then about the setbacks. If, if council chose to make it a bungalow or a single story rather than a two, two-story, is the setback such a concern? Or would it be the same concern? I guess a tough question to answer, but I guess.
I think that's, that's.
So you need, I mean, if we get both, that means you're going to have a setback and a bungalow.
Yeah, which, which maybe, which we can discuss at time. Right now, it's on the setback, so see if that passes, if that passes or not. Okay. Councillor Qualley?
Uh, just to that point, I think the reason that I asked for the setback in the driveway there is so that it would sort of lessen the impact of the visual from the lots on Ben's Crescent. But I also think it's really important that the house that goes on lot five fits into the neighborhood. I, I think if they're all two-story houses, to have one random little, a house that doesn't fit into the rest of the neighborhood doesn't feel like it makes sense to me. So the option that I'm suggesting is with the increased setback in the driveway there, I think that will provide the residents the assurances they need and allow the developer the flexibility to still build a house that's appropriate for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
So if we, if we put the driveway on the east side and we have a three-meter setback, we, from, for the, the house itself, would it not be somewhere from, anywhere from seven to eight, maybe even nine meters from the edge of the property?
It depends on where, how far the driveway goes in. I don't know if the driveway's going all the way through. Mr. Seffy, can you comment on that? I believe the driveway, driveway doesn't go all the way down the side, would it necessarily?
No, Your Worship, there's a requirement for a certain offset, I recall, I think one and a half meters, actually, to coincide with a, with a setback for a driveway to be from a property line. And given the, the setback requirements of the zone for rear, front, and, and side, that provides a certain envelope which then lends itself well to creative design for a house. So we cannot at this point determine, you know, what that might do, but I think it's sufficient, the three-meter setback that council is currently contemplating would be sufficient for the designer of the house to actually provide a adequate design with the driveway on the east side.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's helpful, I, good, thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? I'll call a question, and this is on the setbacks, increasing the setback. And that carries unanimously. And councillor, so we're back to the main motion. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I'd like to add, I've actually got two conditions I'd like to add here, but I'll go with the, the house first. So condition 10, that the majority of houses in this area are not two-story, so much as they're one and a half stories. So they, they might be two stories on part, but they're one story. So I would like to put a condition on lot five that a bungalow or at maximum a one and a half story house be constructed on lot five.
Okay, or one and a half story, okay. Is there a seconder to that? Councillor Arneson seconds, so I'll open up amendment. Any discussion on this amendment to request the proponent to build either a bungalow, which I take is a one-story, or one and a half story house? Councillor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, I think the, the previous amendment of the driveway on the east side and the three-meter setback, I think, is adequate. The placement of the houses in, that are currently there that would face back, I don't think, I think that would make a significant difference, and I don't think we should force this lot to have a house that's different than all the other lots, and so I won't support that.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Well, just generally speaking, I have, as I'm sure other councillors have, gone and looked at the neighborhood there, and it's interesting to me that there is a huge diversity of the houses there. It may be that they have more or less the same square footage, but I don't think that they necessarily all have the same configuration. So I, I don't think it's really a problem to try to look to a plan based on the concerns of the residents on the other side who now will be impacted by what they have clearly said is, from their perspective, something that is a large blank wall. Topographically speaking, it's hard to make a determination from looking at this, but I don't have a problem supporting the fact that they should try and minimize the impact to those who are already resident in the community on Ben's.
Councillor Richter?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think bungalows are imminently marketable, particularly in this area, which, you know, with the larger lots, they're going to be more expensive homes, and they're probably going to be homes that are purchased by people who are a little older due to the, the price point on the home. So I think older people are probably, wouldn't look badly at a, at a bungalow as an option to purchase in a lovely neighborhood like this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll call a question on amendment. And that fails with councillor Whitmarsh, mayor Fros, councillor Qualley, councillor Sparrow, councillor Davis opposed. And councillor Richter, I'll just get your mic back on, you had a second amendment?
All right, so new option 10 is I would like to put a condition that 44A be constructed, but closed off with temporary barricades until such time as 44th Avenue is construction, is constructed and built through.
Okay, is there a seconder? Councillor Arneson seconds. Oops, shoot, I just lost my meeting. Here we go, there we go. Okay, councillor Arneson seconds it. Any discussion on that? Councillor Fox?
Yeah, I think that the residents expressed concern about flow-through traffic, and I understand that. But there was also residents on 220th and 219th Street that said, you know, it would be nice to dissipate some of the traffic as well, because they've got concerns. I think that the, my original condition number seven there was to put the traffic calming in to actually slow the traffic and make the flow still allow, still allow the flow, but with, with reduced speed, and to give choices. If we put the bollards in, it still doesn't give any of those, of those people coming from the south along, up, and then onto 44A, a choice of either going 219th Street or over to Ben's. They only can go on 219th Street. And we did get some correspondence from some people from on 220th that said, hold it here, we, we've accepted all the traffic. We want to, with the opening of 44A, will actually reduce our situation and cause some, allow some choices. But with the traffic calming in place, I think that the drivers can make an, an informed decision as to which way they want to go. That was the root of my amendment seven.
Councillor Long?
Yeah, I thought we voted on the traffic calming as, as a measure to, to reduce the impact of those that came to the public hearing. I think if you put bollards in, you're going to create a whole new problem. I mean, you're going to get down the street, hit a bollard, what are you going to do? Turn around in somebody's driveway or whatever? I took a, a fair amount of time driving through the neighborhood, and I think that the calming initiative is probably the best way to go, and putting bollards up would not be very effective. It'd be effective, but it wouldn't be the right thing to do.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I'm in support of this as, I guess, kind of ameliorating of the situation that I'm not very happy about. I really think when you look at this, the residents on Ben's Crescent, I thought, made a really compelling argument about the increase of the traffic flow. And while it's true, we don't want to favor one set of residents over another, I really think the elephant in the room is 44 Avenue, and, you know, our failure to address that as a throughway. There's lots of development down there, and I think that failing to address that and just making connectivity here, I, I personally favored the double cul-de-sac. I guess that's not happening, but I, I certainly don't support it being a through fare. I think in many instances, people have an expectation, whether right or wrong, that their neighborhood is going to be protected to some degree from traffic, and especially over time. These are beautiful neighborhoods, and I can really see that there's, you know, lots of good reason to make it so that people cannot use it as a through fare. So I'll, I'll be supportive of this, but it's not my favorite option either.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thank you. I'm, I'm not sure how we've been negligent in ignoring 44th Avenue. There's a house in the middle of what would be the road. So it's sort of up to the property owner to decide to develop that or not. I mean, short of appropriating property to build a road, I think that would have some considerable concern to other residents in the municipality. I think looking at this, the, the through road makes perfect sense, and we just agreed that managing the traffic flow through there would sort of satisfy the needs for everybody. But to councillor Fox's point, we did have a lot of feedback from residents who actually wanted that road to go through, that it did make sense for access to the schools and to both sides. So, I mean, short of appropriating that house that somebody's probably living on, living in, and on 44th Avenue, I don't see much of an option. So I don't think we've been negligent at all, councillor Arneson.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? I will call a question on the amendment. Okay, and the amendment fails with councillor Fox, councillor Whitmarsh, mayor Fros, councillor Qualley, councillor Sparrow, councillor Davis, councillor Long opposed. So now we're back to the main motion as amended. And councillor Long, you were next on the list. Did you have any more to say?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm ready to vote now.
Any further discussion on, on the main motion as amended? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. That carries with councillor Richter and councillor Arneson opposed. So we move on to bylaws for final adoption, and this is I-1, it's the hotel room tax 10% levy, bylaw number 5255. Could I have a motion, please? Could I have a motion? Councillor Sparrow, and second by councillor Long, discussion on I-1. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this bylaw, because I really don't think this tax
Yeah, I'm not going to support this bylaw, because I really don't think this tax is being used to make a worthwhile difference in the community. It was meant to help Langley promote various facilities like restaurants, hotels, et cetera, within the community, and I think private industry through websites like Yelp and hotels.com, Priceline.com, et cetera, do a much better job. And I really just don't think this tax is necessary, so I'm not going to vote in favour of it.
Any other discussion?
I am going to be in favour of this tax. I believe that the function of a destination marketing organisation in any municipality, any city, is important. It's one piece of all the marketing, and I agree that there's a lot of great marketing tools out there, but we want to, when I travel, I look at all of them, and I do look at the DMO in the area, and certainly this is a way to fund the DMO. It's pretty common in my travels to see a levy like that on hotels all over North America and other parts of the world that fund their tourism initiatives, and certainly is a piece to be played by a DMO. So this tax is paid by people who are travelling through our community, and it's a provincial tax, and it's well-regulated, and certainly I do support this. I think it's an important piece of our overall tourism marketing activities. Councillor Fox.
Yeah, just to say that I'm planning a trip up to High De Guay this summer, and I can't speak highly enough of the tourism agencies that I've talked to en route to plan, whether it's hotel stays or outings or excursions or whatever the case may be. So I think if they're functioning properly, and everybody's read about the recent trials and tribulations of Tourism Langley, hopefully we've worked at the kinks out of that, and we're now back into, hopefully, a functional relationship with that organisation, that I think we can see some improvements forthwith that will really get it to standalone principles and functionality to really benefit our community. So I will support this.
You, councillor Qualley.
Thank you. I'm also going to support the motion. You know, I think we've taken a lot of steps in the last few months to facilitate some change at Tourism Langley that was necessary, and I think when the money that is collected by the provincial government and given to the DMO, when it's managed well, it can definitely add value to the community. It's paid by visitors that come to this community to spend the night in a hotel, that's the only revenue source is through the hotels. The hotels have said that they want this to continue, and the ultimate benefit is for the local businesses and the residents, and I think we need to do a better job of ensuring that the township is represented thoroughly through our efforts at Tourism Langley. So I think we're on our way to a fresh start there, so I'll support the continuation of the tax.
You. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, I'll call a question on I-1. And it carries with councillor Richter, councillor Arneson, councillor Davis opposed. So now we move on to the mayor and council report. So again, welcome everyone tonight. Just a little report on the activities of your council and mayor. On Tuesday, January tenth, Rich Coleman, Fort Langley Aldergrove MLA and Minister Responsible for Housing, announced that a new affordable seniors' housing project will be located at Two Hundredth Street and Seventy-two Avenue. This would be at the Luthen Church that's just off of Two Hundredth. This four million dollars in provincial funding will allow for an eighty-two unit housing project that will provide affordable homes for seniors with low to moderate incomes and a new housing development in Langley. And certainly, we've heard a lot about the money that Ministry of Housing has for housing projects, and it's good to see some of it landing in Langley to provide some much-needed affordable housing. On Tuesday, January seventeenth, the Langley Seniors Community Action Table hosted a homelessness action panel, where Minister Rich Coleman, Langley City Mayor Ted Shafer, Brian Dodd, Executive Director of the Senior Services Society, Roz Bailey, President of the Surrey Manufactured Home Owners Association, and myself, answered questions from the audience regarding homelessness. Affordable rent for seniors is a priority for seniors in all levels of government, and the community is working towards providing more affordable housing for them. On Tuesday, January seventeenth, was also the opening of the Quantland First Nation exhibit of artefacts and their history, and it's currently on display at the Langley Centennial Museum in Fort Langley. I'd certainly encourage everyone to get down there. This photograph isn't from that evening, we had to find a, I guess my camera wasn't working that night, we had to find a file photograph, but there's some really interesting artefacts that the Quantland First Nation have on exhibit, and certainly worthwhile going to see. On Wednesday, January eighteenth, was the Bates Motel photo op with council and the producers of the highly rated TV series. This series has wrapped up its final episodes after five years in Langley, filming in Langley, and it definitely has a great economic impact on the township. Just one comment that the producer, Justice Green, had said is that one episode, you know, can bring about three million dollars into the economy, and certainly that is jobs that go throughout the gamut, truck drivers, electricians, carpenters. It's really a great source of economic development in our municipality. And following this event was the Langley Immigrant Service Society celebrating five years' open house. On Thursday, January nineteenth, I attended the Walnut Grove Business Association meeting, where I presented an overview of what's happening in the township, and do this annually and give them a little state of the nation on some of the new projects that we're engaged in. Always an interesting group. On Friday, January the twentieth, I attended the grand opening of the Envie Fitness Centre in Walnut Grove, and this is a great fitness centre, it's marketing towards women, and I know they put me through the paces, and it was a pretty tough workout, so I certainly encourage people to stay fit and healthy and check them out. On Thursday, January twenty-sixth, I was invited to participate in a career exploration day at the Langley Fundamental School. I spoke about business specific to the township, the procurement of works provided over a one-year period, and the diversity of products and services required for municipality. And I spoke to a group of grade eight and grade nine students who were, it was an excellent day that they had, just to open their minds to what types of careers are available to them, and certainly they had presentations from all walks of life, and I was happy to participate in that. On Saturday, January twenty-eighth, Cedar Brook Bakery celebrated forty years of being in business, and congratulations, and like to thank them for the invitation to attend. And that beautiful cake was baked in-house, can you believe it? And the baker, who is standing with me with the knife, has been there for thirty years. So certainly, I know a lot of people have been shopping at the bakery and deli for many, many years, and a great business that we have in our municipality. And lastly, I wanted to mention the removal of the large maple tree at the corner of Ninety-sixth Avenue and Glover Road. This is a memorial tree that was dedicated to A.W. Wilson, a Langley resident and a Canadian soldier who fought and died at Vimy Ridge in nineteen seventeen. This tree was planted in nineteen twenty-three along with several other maple trees in the municipality to commemorate and remember fallen soldiers from World War One. On Arbor Day, which is at the end of April, the seedlings from this tree and other trees, similar trees, that have been collected and grown will be planted as part of Arbor Day, and that way we will continue to remember those soldiers who gave their lives. So that is being planned, Arbor Day celebration, and also, as I understand it, there'll be not this particular species of tree planted in this area, but there will be another tree planted there to commemorate. And there's a picture here, you can see that the Langley Elementary School students, one of the classes, became very interested in what was happening, and I thought this was very fitting. He says, "I may be cut down, but my roots still live," and I think that's so important to remember, and this group of students did this on their own, they wanted to do something for, to remember this tree, so really do want to thank them for that. So with that, I'll turn it over to members of council who wish to, if anyone wishes to comment on what they've done. Councillor Qualley.
Thanks. I just also wanted to mention that I attended the opening of the Quantland First Nation exhibit at Fort Langley Gallery, or the gallery, and it's really, really worth visiting, so if you get a chance to stop out there, you should do that. I had the opportunity to attend a public information session hosted by Metro Vancouver, and I'm sure councillor Fox, this might come up in your metro report, but they were putting out a lot of information and getting feedback from people about the water restrictions and the water use in the municipality. So they've proposed some changes to the water restrictions for this year, and actually, our own Megan Norton-Daniel, who is one of our team members here, was one of the panelists, and the township is really sort of heralded as a champion in terms of water management and the things that we do here. So it's great to see the work that Megan's doing, recognised, and she's the chair of one of the metro committees on the water restrictions. So the biggest one, I think, that's going to affect our municipality is that the date's going to change. So last year, the date for water restrictions started on May fifteenth, and this year it's going to back up to May first. And then lawn watering, rather than two days a week, it'll be restricted back to two days a week. So I'm not sure how all of this is going to shake out, whether Metro's going to recommend that all of these changes get put in place, but I think we can look forward to seeing some information from Metro. Councillor Fox, is that coming, do you think, this month?
Yes, we need actually, there's, sorry, not.
This week, next week, so yes.
And so it'll be implemented for next year or this year?
Nope, this year.
So it'll go into effect immediately if it can get pushed through the system quickly? The thing that I found interesting is, in one of the meetings I attended for LMLGA, is that in the report from our flood management committee, that even with all of the snow and the weather we've had this winter, we're still at only seventy-five percent of our average snowpack levels for this year. So even with all the snow, people would think there would still be a lot of water available, but we're still way below average, it's been pretty dry. And this is the first time in thirty years that they've tracked ice flow on the Fraser, so that's kind of interesting. But I think with the work that Metro's doing and the work that the flood management people are doing, this information will serve the municipality well in terms of planning for restricted water use this summer.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Fox.
Oh, I'll just be quick, I was going to mention that. I know councillor Arneson has also attended one of those sessions too, and I think they're very informative. And also, to my colleagues on council, the January mayor, Metro Vancouver Mayor's Chair update has been sent out and covers a number of items, so I won't take time to do that at this point. You all should have received it.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Extremely quickly, we've had a zero-waste meeting, there are parks meetings and housing committee meetings coming up, but our interest perhaps to township, but council would be the consultation process is beginning on disposal bans for expanded polystyrene and textiles, i.e. styrofoam and clothing being a large issue. We throw a lot of clothes away in North America, so they just sit in the ground and cause all kinds of problems, so those disposal bans are being researched by staff right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else in council, seeing none? Thank you very much for your reports. I'll just clear this all off. So now we move on to other business, and councillor Richter, you have a notice of motion.
Yes, thank you. Whereas Walnut Grove area residents continue to be very concerned about the anticipated increase in traffic on two-sixteenth Street North as a result of the new two-sixteenth Street interchange, and whereas there are two elementary schools and two preschools on two-sixteenth Street North between Telegraph Trail and Ninety-sixth Avenue, therefore be it resolved that truck traffic be prohibited on two-sixteenth Street North of the proposed Highway One interchange, two-ninety-sixth Avenue, and that staff be directed to bring forward all necessary bylaw changes in order to prohibit truck traffic on this entire stretch of municipal roads. I so move.
Is there a second? Councillor Davis seconds. Speakers, councillor Qualley.
Sorry, I.
Oh, okay, you didn't want to speak to us. Councillor Long.
Well, Your Worship, I'd like to propose that we refer this to staff immediately. We can spend all night and discuss this, it's of great interest to the community and to council, but we don't have the information that we need in terms of the truck network throughout the township. Presentation has been asked for numerous times, and of course, staff are working on it, and I believe it's imminent. This is a provincial project with federal funding, that some of the newspaper reports I've been reading have mixed up a few things, but it'll be a best service to the residents and mostly to council to get that full presentation from staff, and perhaps consider this option and tell us what the pros and cons of it are, or even if it's possible. So I'd make that motion immediately, Worship, and try not to spend all night here trying to solve it on the back of a napkin. Without the information from staff, we can't possibly make a decision on this, so I'll move a referral to the staff report, which is imminent, and maybe Mr. Backing can tell us when that's coming.
You, and councillor Whitmarsh seconds your motion, so I'll open up a debate on the referral. Is there any debate on the referral? Councillor Richter on the referral.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the referral. I think this is just a tried, another way of not addressing directly the issues that the many people who live in this area have about that stretch of road, and most of it stems around anticipated truck traffic, the width of the road, the noise, the health impacts of truck and increased vehicular traffic on children, I mean, two preschools, two schools on the same stretch of road. We know, Mr. Seffy has told us in previous meetings, that the stretch of road right now between where the highway overpass will come into the township and Eighty-Eighth Avenue is not a truck route, but the stretch from Eighty-Eighth Avenue to Ninety-sixth is a truck route. I think we just standardise the whole thing and make the whole stretch not a truck route.
Against the referral, thank you. Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I'm wondering through you to staff if we could get a more specific date about when we might be receiving this report. My concern generally is the latest reports we have received to council have revised traffic counts, and they seem to be quite at odds, I think, with the original projections, and they intimate that the flow of the traffic may not be quite what was anticipated originally, which would be understandable, because this was not designed by the township, the interchange. It was designed in concert with the township, but by the province for a different purpose. So I'm just wondering if we could find out when we expect to have that staff report.
Thank you. Mr. Seffy, do you have an estimate approximately when, I know we keep referring more work to the report, and I know the staff have been working hard on that report, and certainly a lot of information to gather, but do you have any idea approximately when it might be coming to council?
Thank you, Worship, yes, we are aiming for April, Your Worship.
For April?
April of this year, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion on the referral? Councillor Fox.
Yeah, just a question through you, if I could, to Mr. Seffy. We did receive some revised statistics in terms of traffic flows on two-sixteenth Avenue. Will a report reflect the newer statistical information that MOT has put out, or Binney or whoever put it out, I think it was Binney actually, in your report, so that we have up-to-date statistics and options presented to us?
Your Worship, the report that staff is currently working on with the help of consultants relates to traffic, the truck traffic in North Langley, that being the area essentially north of Highway One. With that in mind, we will try, obviously, to provide council with the most up-to-date information. What I'm not sure about is whether the information will include the traffic count on all the streets, projected and current. It will make reference to truck traffic, but not traffic volume, period.
Well, and that's what this is referring to, is truck traffic, so that's, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley.
Thank you. I'm anxious for the staff report, and we'll look forward to seeing that in April. I'm not sure how we can prohibit truck traffic, or truck traffic on two-sixteenth. I mean, if it's, we can not designate it as a truck route at some point if we decide to do that, but we can't prohibit truck traffic. Trucks will use that if other outlets are closed to them, so there's local deliveries that need to happen there too. There's a bigger consideration, this prohibition is a bigger deal, so I'm not going to support this, because we.
So consequently, we're referring this to staff, you know?
No, I know, I know, but this, I just don't understand the motion. I think that the prohibition is problematic, so I'm anxious to get the staff report back that we've been asking for, and we'll look forward to that happening sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I certainly support this referral. This is not a delay tactic to try and avoid making a good decision. This is about getting all the information. This is about having accurate information, all the information that we need to be able to make the proper decision. It's a very important decision for Langley. It's a complicated decision, there's a lot of different factors, there's a lot of different levels of government involved, and so we need the information. And so this is not a delay tactic, this is not trying to avoid things, this is doing to avoid things. This is doing good diligence and doing good government. And so I want to see the report, and I will wait to make a decision until I see that report.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the referral? Seeing none, I'll call a question. And the referral passes with Counsel Richter and Counsel Arneson opposed. And so I'm now asking, is there any other business? Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. So further to the delegations we had tonight and further to the conversations I've had during the budget meetings the last couple of weeks or months, I'd like to make a referral to staff that we could provide conceptual plans and costing for sidewalk, crosswalk on Ninety-sixth Avenue prior to the adoption of a budget and the five-year financial plan.
Referring that to staff. Thank you.
So a referral for a report.
Seconded by Counsel Sparrow. So to refer that to report, any discussion on that? Okay, Counsel Richter?
Yes, I have a question on that with regards to substantive versus non-substantive. From the perspective of conceptual diagrams, sounds to me like it's substantive, in which case it should be a notice of motion that's being placed on the agenda today for consideration at the next meeting, according to our procedure bylaw. If it is a referral to staff of the information that was presented by the delegations for a report back from staff, then that would fit within our procedure bylaw. But referring to staff for diagrams, I think, goes beyond referral of information to a direction to staff. So I guess I'd like a ruling on that, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Qualley, I believe we meet in a week? Did you wish to leave as a notice of motion?
Sure, I'll just leave it as a notice of motion for next week that I'll be requesting conceptual plans and costing to be provided prior to the adoption of the budget and the five-year plan.
Sure, let's put that as a notice of motion. Fair enough. Counsel Long, did you have any other business?
Well, I would prefer to see the concerns of the delegation, refer it to staff, and have them come back with something. I mean, I know we've got the other motion going, but one of them, one of them, this notice of motion now is saying, okay, that we want to stop everything and create some conceptuals on a new concept, and I think it might be wiser to refer what we've heard from the delegation and combine it with what staff understand that we're supposed to be doing already, and come up with a hybrid perhaps that might make everybody happy. Can we get a staff comment, Your Worship, through you?
Sure. I hear it, Counsel Long. I think with only a week to the next meeting, certainly we'll give Counsel Qualley and staff time to, you know, get that motion formed. We have a good time to look at it. I have no problem with that, but Counsel Qualley has said you do a notice. Mr. Seifi, any comments on that? I think that there'd be some time involved anyway, so having a notice of motion, a week delay shouldn't impact it too much.
Your Worship, Mr. Backen would like to make some comments.
Sure, Mr. Backen.
Thank you, Mr. Seifi. I think the question is, the referral is really of information, so staff can actually go and assess it, but there were several options contained in the presentations from, or the delegates. We understood that at the base level, I think it would need some sort of concept, and then that would relate to the pricing, as that's what's preeminent. What's unclear to us at this point, though, is the middle grounds that were just introduced. Should it be one side with a crosswalk? Should it be both sides with a crosswalk? Previously, there hadn't been the introduction of a crosswalk, not as part of this budget cycle, had been dealt with previously. So it's probably prudent to have a notice of motion and try to, or staff will have some time to perhaps refine it, and council can refine it then at the next meeting in terms of what they think the commonality is among the suggestions.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thanks. Yeah, I think just further to the comments I've made in other meetings, other budget meetings talking about this project, that when I made the motion last time, I asked Ms. Sinclair from Finance how to pay for this, and we're talking about real dollars, today's dollars, whether it's one and a half million, 1.6, 1.7, it's in today's dollars. And the idea that was floated, that was rejected by council, was that we do internal borrowing to pay for this piece of development. So we would do internal borrowing and pay it back over a year or two years to ourselves and be paying in today's dollars rather than waiting to build in a couple of years. So I think that option is still on the table. I'd like to put it back on the table, and if we have an opportunity to build now and pay for it by borrowing from ourselves over the next year or two, that's what I'd like to look at. But I think this, we've heard, this is important to the residents of our community, and I think it's time for us to figure out how to do this. But we need the right information, and we need to know what this is actually going to cost before we can figure out how much we need to borrow.
Thank you. We don't want to debate it tonight. That'll give you time to formulate your notice of motion to give that week, so it's good advice. Thank you, Mr. Backen. Counsel Richter, any other business?
No, I have a question of clarification around what Counsel Qualley just said. Was the motion that she originally put on dispensed with by council? And if it was, how can she bring it back if it's the same motion?
Going to be a notice of motion as you requested. That's the way
No, but she just said she wants to bring back what she'd already put on.
Well, that's fair enough.
That council, I assume, rejected.
But it hasn't come back yet, so we'll rule on it next week.
Worship, there's a technical issue, and that is that I understand that this is important for staff. I understand this is a referral of the information from the delegations to derive from that information, the plans and concepts and the costing. That's what's under the notice of motion. That's substantially different than the previous motion, which was to proceed and provide some direction. But my caveat is it'll be important for council to perhaps be able to refine the direction at the next meeting so we know which options are paramount in council's mind.
Exactly, to give a little bit of time, to give a week. So we'll leave it at that. Any other business? Motion to terminate?
Termination.
Counsel Davis, I'm going to terminate. Second, Counsel Fox, all those in favor? Opposed and carried. Thank you.